Good evening. I would like to call to order the December 12th, 2022 work session of the York County School Board. Hope everyone enjoyed a wonderful Thanksgiving and connected with family and friends. We know our students and staff are completing tasks prior to our winter break in just a couple of weeks. We have a very busy evening ahead with our regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Now, we're going to start the evening with presentations, and the first is our program of studies, proposed changes for FY24. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Ms. Grollz. Good evening, board members. This evening, we have several presentations for you. The first one, as you said, is program of studies. Program of Studies is the middle school and high school course information and registration guide. Dr. Karen Cagle, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and Dr. Andrea Evans, Coordinator of School Counseling, are going to provide an update related to new course proposals, changes to existing courses, course deletions for the 2023-2024 school year. I'll turn it over to Dr. Cagle.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight, Dr. Evans, our Coordinator for School Counseling, and I will share a summary of the proposed updates for the 23-24 program of studies. This is going to include proposed new courses, deletions, revisions, amendments, and budget implications. We've also provided you a handout with more detailed information. So I'd like to begin by providing a little background on the program of studies and our process for making changes. So as Dr. Shandor mentioned, this, the program of studies is the course information and registration guide for our families and our students. The handbook is revised and reviewed each year and available on our division website. So traditionally, the process begins in late spring. We send out a memo. We ask our administrators to collect information from students and staff regarding changes that they'd like to see in the program of studies. And proposals are submitted throughout the summer and fall. Then we meet as a committee, which is our building, our secondary principals, our school counseling directors, our instructional coordinators, program coordinators, and division leadership. We meet in the fall, and we start going through all of the proposals to make the recommendations that you'll see tonight. Now, we did some reflection this year, and this is a pretty tedious, time-consuming task. So, and we have great conversations. It seems like every year, we have to add another meeting. So we have decided to continue our meetings and start now working on FY25. So we're going to continue meeting throughout this year. What you'll hear tonight is for FY24, but hopefully, we're going to be able to expand our process to include more focus groups and surveys as we continue to refine our program of studies. So I'll be excited next year to share how that goes as we continue to move forward. One thing I think you'll notice as we go through the proposals tonight is that it ties very nicely with our new strategic plan. When we talk about preparing our students to be future-ready graduates, you're going to see that in the courses that we're going to propose tonight. So we'll begin with proposed courses to add to our middle schools. So what you see here is computer solutions. We're proposing to offer it as a quarter course at 6th grade, and there'll be an intro to not only word processing, like you see in keyboarding, but so much more. There'll be coding, device management, spreadsheets, those types of things. It's a more robust program than what we currently have with word processing. And we'll also propose to offer it at 7th and 8th grade as a semester course for those middle schoolers. And this course provides a very solid foundation for any of our students who are pursuing some of those CTE courses that are based on computer technology at the high school level. So what you see as far as costs, the textbook and material number that you see there can be covered by our CTE budget, but we will need some funding to start to write the initial curriculum. And then we'll just put that on our curriculum writing plan that we have each year. The next course I want to share is the Health and Medical Science Exploratory Course for middle schoolers. You know, we have the Health and Science Academy at Bruton High School. This will be a precursor to that for our middle school students who may be interested in a medical pathway. And so, we're proposing this the initial year. We'd like to start it at Queens Lake Middle School, just for staffing. As you can see, there's a cost to staffing because this isn't a traditionally licensed teacher. To teach this course, you have to have some type of health and medical license to be able to teach it. So we're going to need some funding for that, but we're hoping to grow the program in addition to grow the Governor's Health Science Academy at Bruton High School as well. So we will need some money, not only for staffing, but for curriculum writing as well. But the, a lot of this course can be, the textbook and materials can be covered with our CTE budget. I'm really excited about these two classes. Traditionally, our middle school students who are interested in music can take chorus or band. This opens this up to a lot more than just those two traditional courses. The music technology is where they're able to use the technology to create their own music, and they can mix music and record music and come up with their own productions, really in building all that creativity piece. They'll also learn about music production if they're interested in that. The startup cost will mostly take care of the software we'd like to purchase for this and the mini keyboards that we'll need to go with the technology. But once we get through the initial startup, the annual cost for the software is around $3,000 a year. The scenic design and set-building courses for those students who are, who love theater and drama, but they don't want to be center stage, they want to be part of the set design, the props, and all the backstage stuff, maybe some directing and things like that. So we are proposing a scenic design and set-building course for our 7th and 8th graders. So now for high school, you probably remember me a few years ago proposing the Entrepreneurship Education Course at the high school level, and we, that class has seen success, and we're excited about entrepreneurship in York County School Division. So we are proposing a second course for entrepreneurship education. This will be a sequential elective for our Entrepreneurship Education 1 class, and students can continue to develop those skills to be an entrepreneur, and this will also provide them that sequential elective they need. The cost here you see is for the curriculum that we use through uncharted learning, and that will be covered with our CTE budget. So you've probably heard about the $50,000 grant that we received from VDOE for K-12 school innovation. This is a planning grant, and we're going to be able to add the aviation career pathway in York County School Division because of this grant. So the initial, the $50,000 we're receiving will help train our teachers. It will help buy the drones that we need and the other technology that we need for this course. The first course you see here, aerospace technology. Our CTE teachers will be able to teach, our tech ed teachers will be able to teach, and it will introduce our students to aerospace industry. The Unmanned Aircraft Systems Course is a partnership with Virginia Peninsula Community College. It will be a dual-enroll class, and the students will get their Federal Aviation Administration Remote Pilot License. They'll be able to fly drones, okay? And so we'll have some work-based learning experiences with it, and this is a great opportunity for our students. We plan to apply for the second year of this grant this year to continue to get additional funding. After that, the maintenance of this course, the sustainability, will be covered with our CTE budget. And now, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Evans to share some more of our high school courses.
Good evening. The first course I would like to propose is our College and Career Preparation Course. And as students are matriculating through high school, they're having conversations about their post-secondary options and plans. And by offering this course, it will allow students to learn how to make that connection of the pathway between education and employment. And so this will just afford students an opportunity to talk to college admission representatives about that application process, talk to financial aid advisors about the benefits of scholarships and grants, as well as talking to community stakeholders about what it looks like to be employable, how to gain networking skills. And then lastly, this course will help students understand, like, what their strengths are, what their interests are, and connect that to a career. And so, we are currently writing the curriculum for this class. We are planning to offer a workshop for this course in the spring of the 2022-23 school year, and it will be coupled with our SAT prep readiness workshop. It will be held after school. And so, we are proposing to offer this as a course for next year so that way, students can take it during the school day. And so, as you'll see in the budget, there's a possibility that staff may need to teach this as an overload, and so that's what the cost is compensating for in the event that teachers would need an additional class period to offer this course. And so, the next course we'd like to propose is Dual Enrollment U.S. History. And exploring the world of dual enrollment affords students the opportunity to experience the college life prior to graduating from high school. And by adding Dual Enrollment U.S. History, students will have the opportunity to earn college credit while in high school. Students must have a 3.0 GPA in order to be eligible to take the course, but upon successful completion, they'll earn six transferable college credits by completing the course. And then, the goal is to offer this course at each of our high schools. Virginia Peninsula Community College encourages the uses of open educational resources, which is why the budget is neutral. And so, we are very excited about this new course as well. So Data Science is a new course through VDOE that expands learning opportunities in math and supports stronger data literacy skills. Data Science is a growing field that allows for the analysis of data through the application of mathematics, statistics, computer information, and information technology. The demand for data science knowledge and skills permeates more and more careers today. The standards support problem-solving using large data sets through an inquiry-based approach. The course is budget-neutral because we'll utilize our teachers as well as open educational resources to support this class. And then, a fun fact, UVA opened a School of Data Science in 2019, and it is the first of its kind in the nation. So we're excited about this Next, we are proposing Environmental Science, and this course will afford our 9th grade students an opportunity to strengthen their science skills before they get into those more rigorous science classes. And then, the training and lab materials will be supported through the NOAA grant that YCSD received this year. AP Spanish Literature and Culture will help students build their language skills and cultural knowledge by exploring works of literature written in Spanish. So students will read, analyze, discuss, and write about works by Spanish, Latin American, and U.S. Hispanic authors of different time periods. In our current program of studies, we offer a non-AP course called Spanish Language and Conversation. AP Spanish Literature and Culture will replace that class, which we'll discuss a little bit later. And then next, we have two IB courses we're looking to propose. These courses will afford students who are taking a language virtually an opportunity to complete their advanced diploma requirements. So our students who are taking Mandarin, Arabic, American Sign Language virtually, they will be able to achieve their advanced diploma by taking these two courses in the IB program, and then the budget will be covered through the IB program. Next, we have two electives that we are proposing for YRA. We've noticed that our students are very interested in cybersecurity, as well as design, multimedia, and web technologies at YRA. And so, by offering these two electives, it will allow students to earn a sequential elective. And the textbooks and materials will all be covered through our CTE budget for both of these courses. Now, I'd like to present course revisions from the committee. Business Management was, it's currently taught as a semester course, and it's paired with Business Law. And by making this a full course, it would allow students an opportunity to earn a sequential elective, and it would also pair with many of our business electives that we currently have. And then, for CTE, we are aligning with VDOE course descriptions, as well as course titles for all of our CTE marketing courses. And then, in order for courses to be proposed as a dual enrollment course through VPCC, courses go through a rigorous process with Virginia Peninsula Community College. And so facilitators have to complete a master's degree within the content area of that course. The syllabus is heavily vetted through VPCC, and it has to be approved. Students have to have at least a 3.0 GPA in order to be eligible to take that course. And so, because these courses are heavily vetted through a community college, it meets the criteria to be considered a weighted credit. So we're proposing to wait dual enrollment 12 English. We currently have 239 students taking this course. Next, course revision is World Geography. This course is currently offered virtually for our students. We would like to offer it in person so that way, students have an opportunity to take that course in person. By offering it in person, it will also allow for more comparable and easier transition for our students who are taking AP Human Geography and are facing challenges in that course. Next, we will discuss proposed course deletions. And you'll notice that even though we're proposing the removal of these courses, the committee worked really hard to try to identify other courses that could replace and cover the same material that was in these current courses. And so, earlier, we proposed three new courses, Computer Solution 6, Computer 1, and, I'm sorry, excuse me. We proposed Computer Solution 6 and Computer Solutions 1 and 2. These three courses will replace Keyboarding Basic 6, Keyboarding, Computer Applications 1 and 2, as well as Digital Literacy. And then, some of the efforts of the committee sought was to remove courses that haven't been offered in the last three to five years, and Exploring Our World was one of those courses. And so, Exploring Our World is not a social studies requirement. It's an elective that our students choose to take, and over the years, there's been very low enrollment. It's currently only being taught at one of our middle schools. And so, students will have the opportunity to dive deeper into geography by taking the World Geography course in the 9th grade The next course is Business Law. Students will have an opportunity to learn Business Law concepts in the full-year Business Management course that we presented earlier. Language and Cultures has been replaced by ESL Rigor. Spanish Conversation and Culture was offered to seniors who took AP Spanish Language, and this will be replaced by the AP Spanish Literature and Culture class. And then, this will give our students another opportunity to take an AP course. Lastly, multimedia communications and seminar we're proposing to be removed because it's not, it doesn't offer our students a sequential elective, but the multimedia and web technologies too will afford students an opportunity to earn a sequential elective. And now, I will turn it back over to Dr. Cagle, who will share additional revisions to our program of studies.
So part of our strategic plan is to commit to the outcome of our students' success. And one of the ways to do this is by providing our students every opportunity to graduate on time. And occasionally, we have students who transfer in who need additional credits to the maximum eight that we have in our program of studies. So we want to be able to give them that opportunity if they have that ninth course they need to take to be able to graduate with their peers. And this is also true for students who may have been retained. So we are proposing to, for students that are in those situations, they've been retained or they're transferring in, that we are proposing to allow them the opportunity to take that class above the maximum eight, and that's for standard diploma. And also for standard diploma, currently, our students who receive a standard diploma, we require them to take four U.S., I'm sorry, four U.S. or Virginia History and Social Science courses credits. And so, that's a requirement of ours and not VDOE, so we want to align with VDOE and just require the three that VDOE requires. This will open up their schedule for more electives or more courses that align with their post-secondary pathway. And then, the Governor Health and Science Academy. Currently, there's a pretty rigorous math and science courses that are required to be in the Governor's Health Science Academy at Bruton High School. So because some of our courses, if the students are pursuing health and medical careers that don't require those higher-level maths and science courses, we don't want to put that requirement on our Bruton application. So we're going to change the level of science and math needed to allow more students to participate in the program. And lastly, we do have a sentence in our marketing education portion of the program of studies asking, or stating that students must complete an application, but they don't need to complete an application to be in our marketing program. So we're going to remove that sentence. And we would like to include a sequential elective appendix at the very end for families and students to be able to see what courses are sequential electives, to help them when they're making those decisions and choosing courses for So, two nights from now, New Horizons will present their classes to their, their courses to their board. And so, we don't have information from New Horizons at the moment to share with you. I'll bring that back to you, or Dr. Evans will bring that back to you in January, and then, so that you can see any proposals from New Horizons. But we don't have their information yet. So, thank you for the opportunity to present the work of this committee. They were a hard working committee, as you can see. And the proposals that we've shared will come up for approval later this evening, and the New Horizons updates, as I said, will be shared next month. So this pretty much concludes our presentation. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to take those.
Thank you both very much.
Questions? Comments?
I do have one thing. I know, I've mentioned it before, when the state requires new things for graduation or at the middle school level, the Career Investigations Class that's being done, I believe currently, it's being implemented through the 6th grade, the rotation and things like that. And students who are in the year-long 6th grade classes then have to take it as a semester-long class in 7th grade, I believe is my understanding. Is that incorrect?
They have a choice. They can take it as a quarter-long course in the 6th grade, or they can take it as a semester-long course in 7th or 8th.
Okay. So, like, the students who are in 6th grade in, like, the year-long electives band course, things like that, then they have to do it as a 7th grade as a semester-long course. So I'd like to see an option, at least somewhere, look into possibly whether it can be done over the summer or something so that they don't feel like they're being penalized for having to do an additional quarter, essentially, for that, for that Career Investigations Class. But I also love, like, the music technology, you know, option that's in there for an upcoming class.
You'll come be a guest speaker?
I'd love to. Sure. Yeah. So, but it's, I'm just sort of putting that plug out there again.
We have mauled around with that idea of offering it during the summer academy as well.
Okay.
And we have so many programs of studies. We have tons of them, lots of options for our students, which I'm very appreciative of. So Earth Science, do we still have Earth Science?
Yes.
So is Earth Science and Environmental Science, are they two totally different?
Yes, they are.
Because I can just see, just looking at the names, that it could be very similar and the same, but they're not. They're totally different.
They're not. They're two different courses. And I would look at Environmental Science kind of as a prerequisite to Earth Science. So it's going to help lay down those foundational skills for students prior to entering into Earth Science.
Okay, good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Yeah, that, it's great work. The link to future-ready in the strategic plan, we greatly appreciate that. I do appreciate, too, that you're going to do this on a more persistent basis, which makes great sense and kind of come out of the annual cycle. You know, there's an implementation cycle, for sure. But the other piece is, the obvious linkage is particularly from the middle to the high school from a future readiness and the CTE standpoint. Yeah, that's excellent. Very good.
I know a lot went into that, so thank you very much. And I just want to say, I'm grateful that we're doing a lot of focus on increasing our dual enrollment classes. I know both my kids participated in that, and it was very beneficial. So I'm grateful that we're working so hard to find more opportunities for kids to do that.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right. Next, we have our Building Administrators Performance Evaluation System.
Thank you, Ms. Grollz. Dr. Tony Vladu, our Chief Human Resource Officer, is going to share some information related to the Building Administrators Performance Evaluation System Handbook. That's a lot to say. Dr. Vladu.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Madam Chair Grollz and members of the board, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide you with a few updates on our Building Administrator Performance Evaluation System. So if you'll remember, down memory lane, back in 2021, the General Assembly, both the House and the Senate, passed bills to update the revised guidelines for uniform performance standards, this time for principals previously we brought before you, teachers. In May 2022, there was a public comment that ended, and that was broad implementation effective July 1. Many of these standards, or the summary of the standards I'm bringing you tonight, will be retroactive should you approve them later on. What I want to share is that we are revising to ensure compliance with state law and the Virginia School Board, actually, Virginia School Board. So this is a side-by-side comparison. It made me wonder, well, how are these standards different from previous standards? So every 10 years, the General Assembly updates these standards. So in sum, we have a change from standard 3, from human resources management to human resources leadership. If you think about all of the things that have been happening with staffing, with developing individuals, developing employees once they're on the job, there's a lot to human resources, not just management, but in the area of leadership. The other major change is the addition of a brand-new standard, which is culturally responsive and equitable school leadership. These are teased out from previous standards. As we looked at the 2012 standards, it is the job of a school-building principal, of our principals, to be able to provide an opportunities and a welcoming environment where all students can be successful and working with teachers to make sure that everyone has access to a high-quality education. So those standards have been teased out and have been, again, set separately under our new standard 6. So these are the ratings. If you look at the current ratings on your, in the left-hand column, exemplary professional performance needs improvement and unsatisfactory. It's recommended that they're changed to highly effective, effective, approaching effective, and ineffective. Essentially, they're looking at impact. We know that you could be an exemplary leader. However, what is your impact on the school community? So it is strongly recommended that we adopt these, the changes to these standards. Next, the weights. Again, on the left-hand side, you'll see that every standard, with the exception of standard 6, was 15 points for a total of 100 points. Standard 6 was, again, 10. The revised standards are equal in weight. In other words, they're 12.5% each, and they should add up to 100% for the revised scores. That means that no standard's more important than the other standard. So in sum, there are some key takeaways I want to review. The changes are limited to those required by law and the Virginia State Board of Education. We have a robust performance evaluation system for building administrators. What this does, it brings us into compliance. The new standards, by and large, embedded into the existing standards. And so, it's, again, they're teased out from previous standards to the new standard. The rating normalizations are most focused on impact rather than what individuals do or leaders do. They're focused on the impact of leaders. And lastly, as per Code of Virginia, administrators on continuing status, in other words, once a principal is in that position for three years, they'll be formally evaluated every three years per Code of Virginia. However, they will receive written feedback annually. And if you are on a summative or in the first three years of, as a building administrator, as an assistant principal or principal, then you'll receive that summative evaluation every single year. Again, we're complying with state law with that change. So this concludes the summary of updates. At this time, I could take your questions and your comments.
I just have one comment. I mean, the changes are so minor, and it appears that a lot of it's semantics. I would have assumed professionalism would have already covered culturally responsive and equitable school leadership, and that's what we've been doing all along, is covering that under leadership. But somebody felt the need to spell this out, I guess.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for all the work you've done on this, too, as well.
Thank you.
So the Building Administrator Evaluation Cycle, that's similar to the teacher one, correct? That once they do the three years and then the summative, then they have that same pattern?
That's exactly it. We, all of our 900 teachers in our school division relate to that practice, that you receive your formal summative evaluation every three years. However, every year, our teachers receive feedback, and they receive written feedback because the work that they do is important enough to receive that feedback. So, under Dr. White's leadership, every principal and assistant principal will receive written evaluative feedback every year. Only third year for those that are on continuing status where they will actually get a comprehensive eighth-standard performance evaluation.
Sure. Thanks.
Any...
And again, the revised weighted scores are driven by the state, right? That's state compliance?
Word for word. Yeah. They're driven by the state.
That's interesting. I just find it interesting that they're equal across the board. I would weight some of the evaluation standards differently, but, okay, that's fine.
Anything else?
Thank you so much, Dr. Vladu.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vladu.
Next, we'll move into our S R 3 survey update. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Groll. Next, we have Dr. Jim Carroll, our Chief Operations Officer, going to provide an update related to the S R 3 survey results. Dr. Carroll?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Madam Chair, members of the board, sorry for the technical problem. Board, as you know, tied to the S R 3 reporting is a requirement to review our Safe Return to School and Continuity of Learning Plan every six months, which the division has performed in that time period each time. In addition, in October, Governor Yonkin directed the State Superintendent of Public Instruction to require all school divisions to reengage in public consultation when updating our plans by December 31. Tonight, I'm sharing the community feedback that we received on the direction that they feel that S R 3 funds should take. So you'll see that, a couple weeks ago, that we sent out a survey link to roughly 30,000 email addresses that are associated within the division. And we had 24 total responses, which is .08% of 1%. We had 15 family responses, and three that were both family, but also employees. Five respondents gave input on multiple subjects that apply to the S R 3. Four did not address the S R 3 grant at all, either giving the division just kudos on how we had handled the COVID response in general, or listing general comments that didn't address S R 3 grant. The remaining were roughly, half, that were left, were half-family responses and half-employee responses. Any response that was a mixture of family and employee, we put with the employees, so that we wouldn't dilute any pure family feedback. So we were left with three areas for both families and staff, where we had more than one response. And in each of these, you see the number 2 in parentheses, which was the total of the subjects that were, that were addressed. And in the family area, you see three, and these are listed in alphabetical order, is number one, advocating for in-person learning. The second one was air filtration comments, and the third was learning loss. And then when we look at where the staff addressed, there were just general comments on just general illness in the schools, not COVID-related, but we know there's a lot of stuff out there, right? Mental health and wellness, and staff workload were the other two in the staff area. At our last meeting, Dr. Stevenson reported on our past S R spending. In response to the parent feedback comments, she cited in that report that 45% of our S R 3 funding was dedicated to learning loss, although the requirement is only 20%. And air filtration elements are planned for expense in our capital improvements program. So our spending is in line with these family concerns. As far as staff, staff workload, of course, is tied to the fact that we have a lot of open positions in the, in the division, even though we are working hard to try to fill them, as is every division in the state. And, you know, everybody's struggling with general illness that are, they're not COVID-related. So what remains there is mental health and wellness. And we've provided S R 3 funds, as well as other S R funds previously, towards this category. Therefore, absent any input that differs from areas already receiving funding, priority in S R 3 grant, the division will continue on the current funding course. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you.
I mean, the only thing I would say is to have a response rate in the one-hundredth of a percent is not ideal. So if there's any parents who are out there asking, like, I didn't hear any information, or I didn't get the survey, please check that your email address is correct, so when we send it to you, it's not bounced back to us, or you don't receive it. And it's possible, like, one letter's typed wrong or something like that, but that way you can stay informed. Because a lot of times we hear, you know, I didn't know that, no one told me, or something like that. And so we're trying to communicate, reach out, and get some information and feedback back from, from people. And this is one great way to do it. But a response rate like that doesn't provide any relevant data when we have, you know, those responses.
Mr. Higginbotham, that's a good point, because we always have that problem occasionally with people. They would be seeing a total blackout from us as far as communication. So that's a really good point. We always encourage our families to keep their information up to date.
And, and we don't know. It could be that, because we were already doing these things and doing them well, there was no need for this response as well. And kudos to the division for what they've been doing. Even before the S R 3, we were doing all these things. And I think we may have been lacking maybe in the mental health, and that's been, been addressed and being done better. But we're addressing all those and, and then some. So I think you're doing, we're doing a great job. The staff is doing a great job, actually. So, thank you.
And there was certainly regular engagement early when we presented, or were presented with the S R funds, presented the plan. There was routine engagement. I probably had at least a dozen conversations early on. Not terribly substantial, but there are other ways in which parents and stakeholders in the community can engage, and we're engaged. But yeah, I do agree with regard to the small sample, so.
I think I'm going to put a positive spin on it, and that made your workload easier for reading 24 responses. One thing I'm grateful for, and I know this as a board member, and there might be families out there who don't understand this, when the survey is given, every single piece of data that comes in from a survey is reviewed and compiled and looked at. So if you do get a survey and you think, oh, that's, what does it matter? My voice isn't going to be heard. I really encourage people to fill out the surveys. You can lead a horse to water, you can't make him drink. But I'm grateful that we're not just taking the survey and saying, oh, whatever. We're really looking piece by piece and looking at every piece of information that's being given, so.
Madam Chair, that's a really good point. And because we had such a small turnout, I personally responded to every one of them.
That's great.
I was going to ask that. That's great news. And you demonstrated the alignment with where we are. So that's, that's good news, too.
Absolutely. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, move into our capital projects report. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Groll. Now, Dr. Carroll is going to share this month's capital projects report. Dr. Carroll?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Madam Chair, members of the board, here is your December report. So we'll move on. There's just two projects here, is the Seaford project that you've heard from me in the last few meetings. And we have a lot of activity out at the Seaford project, and you can read through each of those. I won't do that. But I will highlight completion of the structural steelwork. All window frames and glass have been installed. The HVAC is fully underway now, and they have, they've dried in large portions of the building and are already hanging drywall in some areas. And you'll remember, I think in a previous report, I talked about the fact that we are looking to be dried in on the, the pole addition before the first of the month, or the first of the year. So now we'll move on to some pictures. So here is a November 5 picture you saw at the last meeting. Note the metal decking on the roof and the open windows and unfinished walls, exterior walls. And here you see, the window frames are in place with glass. You see the roof membrane is in place. I think we're about 90% to 95% done on the roof. And, and you'll see that there's exterior siding out there. Also, here is a courtyard view. So you can see what that's going to look like in one of the exits out onto the courtyard. Now to the inside, you'll see that geothermal pumps have been installed, and they are, they are being installed. And that, that work continues. And HVAC work that's up near the, right under the metal decking, so this would be above the, the drop ceiling. So this would be things that people will never see once the building is complete. And here's the stage area. Now, this is an odd picture, because I took it with a fish-eye lens. You can see that is a straight, a straight wall of that two-by-four there. But the picture was taken that way, so you could see the entire stage. You see some HVAC duct work at the top. You also see where the drywall's beginning to be hung. And then the final piece is, if you've been out on Seaford Road, you've probably seen a lot of roadwork on the side, and that's installation of some improved storm drainage, which includes draining off of the BMP that's placed under the parking lot, the new parking lot. So that work continues. And now we have York High School. This is a short report. You'll remember, in the last board meeting, I talked about the fact that we are now going to move to an auditorium metal roof. And that, those materials were supposed to arrive today. I didn't get confirmation before I left for over here. But they plan to begin that installation this week, with final substantial completion on January 6. And here you see the, the buildings surrounding the auditorium with all that white coating that's been shown to you before. And there is the aluminum. And you can see that, once they start to replace that, that's going to be a quick job. And that concludes my capital projects report, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll. Questions or comments?
It's nice to see that the York roof is going to be, I feel like I've received updates on that for the three and a half years I've been on the board, so it's nice to see that.
It was a two-year project.
Yeah, getting ready, getting ready to finish up here next month, so.
Now, I know there's no students in the auditorium necessarily having classes. Are we worried about the, the noise going through to any classrooms when they're working on the metal roof for that last, I guess, week and a half?
I haven't heard any complaints there. Now, we, we do have a plywood structure that blocks off all that work from there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Next, we'll move into our proposed capital improvement program.
Thank you, Ms. Groll. Next, we have our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Bill Bowen, who is going to present the superintendent's proposed FY '24 to FY '29 capital improvements plan. Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Madam Chair, members of the board, this evening I'm presenting the superintendent's proposed capital improvements program for fiscal years 2024 through 2029. And a copy has been provided to you. The basis of the CIP is the six-year facilities master plan that was presented by Dr. Carroll at the November 7 work session. While this is presented over a six-year period, in the end, what the board will be approving will be the projects and the funding for FY '24. The out years, of course, are presented for planning purposes, but also this information is used by the county for its debt capacity model, as the county is required to balance its debt within legal requirements. Since Dr. Carroll's presentation, there have been a few changes, and that's what I want to focus on this evening. One thing to note, as we go through the report, the items in green represent cash funding, and the items in black represent bond or debt funding. After the November 7 work session, the county reached out to us to request that we look and try to reduce the debt capacity for our projects in fiscal years '27, '28, and ' '29. Those changes are reflected in the elementary projects. So if you look at Dare Elementary in FY '27, from what Dr. Carroll presented in November 7, we shifted $1 million up from debt service to cash project. And the same thing for 2029. For '28, Waller Mill Elementary School, that $1,097,000 was listed as bonds, but that is actually cash money. That's proffer money. So what that means is that when developers, when they plan these big developments, they will often offer some proffer to the county in the form of either land for a school, for buses, for transportation, or cash. And so this is cash that's been set aside for the northern part of the county. And so we're going to be using some of that cash for Waller Mill. Before I move on, one thing I would like to point out to the board, Mount Vernon Elementary School, we have a HVAC project there. What's not showing here is FY '22. If you recall, in FY '22, we received $2.5 million in federal funds for this project. We received word early on that that, that project may be budgeted on the low side. We did add an additional $200,000 for 2024. Last week, the, the county conducted the bid opening, and the bid came in, we had one bid received, and it came in at $9.9 million. So we're, have a shortfall of about $7.2 million. I, I think what we're starting to see is, because there's so much federal money out there, and the, and the federal money's being used for HVAC projects, is that the projects are just skyrocketing. So we'll have to go back to the drawing board. Certainly, we don't want to lose this money. This is the first time in, in my career that I've ever seen the federal government offer money for construction. So we want to try and utilize this as best we can. But we'll need to regather and, and talk about that. So on the middle school side, the only change here we had for FY '24, I'm sorry, FY '25, Queensland Middle School increased just by over $4,000. Again, additional proffer money that was identified that's being added to that project. On the high school, there is one change, and that's to the TAB High School Project for FY '23. Previously, we had $1,000,500 in cash for this project, but we identified $127,846 in additional undesignated bond funds. They're going to be used, thus reducing the cash requirement there. And for our other projects, there's no changes here. And the same for our, our ARPA projects. These are the projects that have been funded with the county's contribution of ARPA funds to the school division. So for the total, CIP for 2024 remains unchanged. This is $11,580,000, with $1 million being funded with cash, and $10.58 million being funded with bonds. And that's my presentation this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen.
I just want to make sure I heard correctly. Mount Vernon HVAC project, the bid came in at how much?
$9.89 million. Now, it did include a little bit of roof work, but it wasn't that much roof work, too.
We could almost build a whole new school, or could have, maybe back in the day. I don't know what it is now, but wow. But it was only one, one bid for that, right?
Correct. So the county's, the county's reaching out to some other contractors to see why there was little interest. We had, I think there were two people that showed up at the pre-bid meeting, but only one offered the bid.
All right. Thank you.
My concern is that, now that they know that there's a, you know, a flow of cash from the federal government, they're going to gouge. You hate to see that. I mean, that's a ridiculous jump.
Yes. I mean, to quadruple from-
Ridiculous.
Yeah.
Especially without other bidders. I mean-
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
All right. Next, we'll move into policy discussion. First, we have Discussion of Policy, Section D, Fiscal Management of the School Board Policy Manual. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Groll. Mr. Bowen's going to stay right there at the podium and provide information related to the proposed revisions to policy, Section D of the School Board Policy Manual. Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Madam Chair, members of the board, every four years, we bring before you updates to school board policies. This is our opportunity to undertake a comprehensive review and update policies to account for any changes in state and administrative codes, as well as the VSBA model policies. So this evening, I present to you proposed changes and updates to Section D, Fiscal Management. And board members, you can, you can view these information in board docs. Section D has 27 policies. Revisions are proposed for 19 policies, and eight policies are presented for restatement, meaning no changes. The majority of these changes are grammatical in error nature and updates to the VSBA model language. So I'll begin with Policy DA, with management of funds. Changes are made to replace his or her designee with superintendent's designee, and to replace shall be with is and will use and to uses. And there's also a legal reference update. Policy DB, annual budget, changes made to replace his or her designee with superintendent's designee. And this is the majority of the changes. Policy DGC, school activity funds, changes school funds to such funds. School funds could be interpreted to mean operating funds, and there is a distinction between operating funds and school activity funds. Also changes the State Board of Education with Virginia Board of Education. DGCX is the authority principles to execute contracts. This adds language further emphasizing that the school board attorney must review contracts prior to, prior to the principal signing the contract. There is also a legal reference update. Policy DGXY, fundraising activities conducted by schools. This is a correction, a spelling correction to fundraising. DGZZ, there's no policy for DGZZ. However, the section header was in the policy manual, so we've eliminated that reference. DI, Policy DI, financial accounting and reporting, changes- DI, Policy DI, financial accounting and reporting, changes his and her designee to superintendent's designee, excuse me, changes central school division, division office to school board office, but also changes comprehensive annual financial report to the annual comprehensive financial report in compliance with GASB 98, which is the governmental accounting standards board. This change was made because of the reference of, the acronym CAFR was related to a derogatory term in another country, and since these, these standards are worldwide standards, they've changed it to the annual CAFR comprehensive financial report. Policy DIA, reporting per pupil costs, the change deletes who the pupil, per pupil cost report is distributed to, and so we're deleting to each parent guardian, other person having control or charge over the child enrolled in the school division. The Department of Education prescribes how the report is distributed, and there's also a legal reference update. Now, just for, for YCSD, we report our per pupil costs, both on our website, and we also report that information in our budget document. Excuse me. Policy DIY, fund balances, changes the comprehensive annual financial report to the annual comprehensive financial report to comply with GASB 98. Policy DJA, purchasing authority, changes the his or her designee to superintendent's designee, but we've also added language specific to the purchasing card, the P-card. The county maintains a P-card program for both county and schools. The terms of use, however, fall under the county purchasing ordinance. So we've added language that's restating the county's requirements and their purchasing order, purchasing ordinance, and then we've added this for ease of reference. So prior to this, somebody needed to go to the county ordinance to see what the requirements are, and now we've just included that language in our, in this policy. Policy DJG, vendor, vendor relations was a grammatical change only. Policy DK, payment procedures, also grammatical change. Policy DL, payroll procedures. So policy update requires school divisions to update its payroll schedule if students are required to attend prior to August 15th. We actually did change our payroll schedule when we required our staff, staff to report prior to August 15th, so this has already been done. Policy DLB, salary deductions, added language to address state tax laws in addition to state tax regulations, and there was also a grammatical change. Policy DLC, expense reimbursements, we added some substantial language to request, to require, I'm sorry, all requests for travel be in writing and approved by an administrator department head. Now, this was common practice, but we have had, seen a couple of examples where approval was done by email, but there was things that were missing, like estimated costs for travel. So we're now requiring all requests to be in writing and approved. The request must include the purpose of travel and all estimated costs. Requires that staff meals and incidental expenses be reimbursed at the GSA per diem rate, with exceptions noted. So we've, we've seen on occasion where there, a traveler has used a P-card, and so we eliminate that, that, that use of the P-card for travel, overnight travel. And the reason is, is because when, when you use a P-card or use your own card for travel, the traveler's required to have a detailed receipt, and oftentimes, we, that's lost in, in the travel. And so if, if they submit a receipt that's not detailed, it requires the finance department or it requires that employee to call and, and try to obtain that, which is often difficult to do. When they submit the detailed receipts, then finance department has to make sure that they didn't exceed the per diem for that time. So it eliminates a lot of administrative work if we just require the employees to use the per diem. It also requires lodging rates be based on the GSA guidelines. So if, if there is a, for, for example, for travelers heading to Richmond and the GSA said we'll reimburse $100 for the hotel, and it's $150, then the department head or the supervisor can approve that. Anything above that 50% approval will have to go to the superintendent or superintendent's Policy DM, cash in buildings, just changes his or her designee to superintendent's designee. Policy DN, disposal of surplus items is a legal reference update. Policy DY, sale and exchange of lease of school board property, deletes language with no more than two yearly extensions. So this removes the restriction on lease renewals, or lease extensions. Policy DZ is risk management, and it changes the designee, his or her designee to superintendent's designee. And then Policy DZB, reimbursement for property lost or damaged, changes again the designee from his or her to superintendent's designee. So that's the policy updates for this evening. Staff is now recommending that the proposed revisions to Section D, Fiscal Management, be for first reading pursuant to school board policy on policy manual revisions.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
All right, next, we're going to move into, actually, that is our last topic on the agenda. As always, thank you very much for all the work that goes into these presentations. We know it's a lot to keep us updated. Our regular meeting will be held here tonight at 7:00 PM. Have a great evening.